To approve the February 21st, 2019 regular scheduled meeting minutes as written.
Second.
All right, great. So there's a first and a second. For this one, I did have two minor amendments. You know me, Toby. I can't let it go. Page five?
Page five. Okay. Let me just grab the...
Yep, so this is February 21st.
Okay.
Page five, it's the first line of the second paragraph.
Okay.
The word "was" towards the end is just missing an "s."
Oh.
And then, one other thing.
Same page?
Same page, yes, I believe. Where was it? I think, yeah, here it is, right here. So, two more paragraphs down.
Abstained.
Where it starts with Mr. Femia.
Uh huh.
The second line where you introduce one of the members of the public who spoke, his first name is Christopher. He's got his last name there.
Uh huh.
But then when the last name shows up in the first line of the very next paragraph, it's got a different spelling. I just wanted to clear that up.
Oh, okay. I'll have to check.
Perfect. Those are the two very minor stuff. Oh. Yep, okay.
So I revised the motion for the February 21st, 2019 regular scheduled minutes with the amendments.
Beautiful. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Raj is the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that's 3-0, Toby, because both Nate and John abstained.
Okay.
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 Fair enough. All right. It is now 7:07. That being the case, we can move on to hear the first public hearing. This is with petition for a special permit with Cynthia Sparks from 14 May Street. Those of you involved, please feel free to come to the table. Can I, just before we begin, can our clerk, does our clerk have the public notice that we can read into the record? Everybody should have that somewhere.
It should be like attached to the...
I think it's right here.
You've got it?
Yeah. Yeah, there it is. Somebody read that for us? This one?
I think David did it. Okay, I'll read it. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing at the West Boylston Town Office's 140 Worcester Street, West Boylston, Mass. In the Board of Selectment Meeting Room 210 on Thursday, May 16, 2019, at 7:05 to act on the petition of Cynthia Sparks, 14 May Street, West Boylston, Mass., for a special permit under zoning bylaws 1.4b for the removal of a shed, covered porch, and enclosed portico and construction of a new two-car garage addition to the existing single-family home at 14 May Street, West Boylston, Mass. Record title stands in the name of Cynthia A. Sparks, 14 May Street, West Boylston, Mass., or 1583. Copies of the petition are on file in the office of town clerk, 140 Worcester Street. All interested parties invited to attend the hearing. Christopher E. Olson, Chair.
Sir? Sir? Oh, could you sign in, please, George?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, so we'll hold, we'll do what we normally do for these hearings. First, we'll give you an opportunity to speak, to explain what it is that you're asking for from this board. If we have questions, we'll ask. After that point, then we can open it up to the public for any comments that they may have. Fair enough? Fair enough. The floor is yours.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Timothy Fitzgerald with Harvey Remodeling, representing the owner who's with me here, Cynthia Sparks, seeking a special permit under section 1.4-b of the Town and West Boylston zoning bylaws to construct a two-car attached garage to her existing house. The house has situated now, has a covered, a rear portico, a covered porch, and a shed, which will be removed, taken down, out of the way, in order to construct the new two-car garage. It will actually lessen the pre-existing nonconformity of the house as it sits on the lot now. By taking away the shed, the new garage will actually be within the setback requirements on the lot. She's surrounded by three streets on her property, so it is a, she does have a unique situation in her part of this section of West Boylston. Hence, the application for a special permit in order to do this project for the owner Cynthia Sparks. Except, and the reasons are set forth on Form B, a separate attachment for question number six. That was part of the application.
Are there any questions from the board?
The barn remaining?
Barn remains, yes.
How far is the shed currently from the property line?
Shed currently from the property line is about 1 feet 6 inches from the side lot line.
Oh, wow. And when the garage goes in, it would be 12 feet from the property line? Am I reading that correctly?
Garage would be 10 feet from the side, and the rear will... It's within both the rear and the side. If you have the drawings, page A5 shows the proposed addition with the dimensions from the surveyor.
So that looks like 12.2 and then 11.5.
Correct.
Yeah.
Where is the, is the front of the house actually on May Street, or is it on Pearson Street?
May Street.
It's on May Street.
Because I guess I'm looking at this map, on this, on A5, it looks like the existing, the face of the existing house faces Pearson Street. Am I wrong?
Yes, it's in fact faces May Street.
So the front, you're saying the front door faces towards May Street?
Yes.
Yes.
Wow. Which street is the driveway on?
Green Street.
The driveway's on Green Street? So the house faces May, but the driveway's on Green?
Yeah.
Correct.
Is there any setback? It looks like only a foot setback from Pearson, is that...
Yeah, it's very close.
Right on top of the street, huh?
When this house was built, there's a good chance none of these streets, with the exception of maybe May Street, even existed.
How old is the house?
From 1810. 1810?
I just want to say that in the seven years that I've been on the ZBA, this is probably one of the best plans that I've seen. It's in color, it's precise, you know, I mean, it's like, and I think anybody could just, could read this and understand it, so kudos to you for doing this the way you did.
Thank you.
So you're saying that May Street was the main street at the time, and then all of a sudden Pearson and Green Street just kind of showed up?
That's, I'm guessing.
We're guessing.
I'm guessing, because the house is 200 years old.
Are they private, are they pri, is Green Street and Pearson, are they private, or does the town own them?
Town.
The town owns them in Plaza?
Yeah.
Really? Okay. Good for you. And so now, the way that the structures sit, these, it's not, you don't meet any of the setbacks. But after, if the board approves this plan, you will...
The house will remain nonconforming, but the garage will be within the required setbacks.
Right.
May I ask one question? What's the size of the shed, covered porch, and enclosed patio?
The size of it now?
Mm-hmm. And what's the size of the proposed garage, new garage addition? Two questions.
New garage addition is approximately 24 by 30 feet. And the dimensions of the existing covered porch and shed are on, I believe, the, in existing, the one plot plan was done of the existing structures on the property, which I do not currently have in my possession.
I do, but it wasn't, it isn't part of what they have.
That's A4, right, I believe?
No.
They only have the new one?
Did we show them the existing?
No.
Or not on the drawings?
I haven't.
There's existing footprint demolition plan.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Page A4.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, that's A4, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's see.
So the deck, the shed, and the portico, all three of those are going to be torn down or replaced?
Yes, the deck is a covered walkway to the shed.
Okay.
And the portico directly attached to the house will come down. My, I apologize, my copy that I brought is so small, I believe the dimensions to answer his question are shown. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's see if I can see it on this one. Oh, those are elevations, I'm sorry. Those are elevation. So I do not have the exact dimensions of the, of the portico, the covered deck, and the shed.
Certified plot plan edition?
The first one might, if you have a copy of the first one. The one without the proposed addition.
That doesn't help, does it?
No.
Doesn't have the exact...
We have it shown on the, on the, on the, all the existing structures are shown on a plot plan, but the dimensions are not there. I'm not sure if they show on the assessors' page.
They might, actually, too.
Usually, there's a diagram there. Here it is. Yes.
I have them.
Thank you, Cindy. So the, the portico and the covered porch are, according to the assessors' page, is 21 feet long by 4 feet wide, and the shed is 20 feet long by 8 feet wide. And I have that here, if that is helpful to you, if you'd like to see that?
That's fine, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
So let me just summarize here what my current understanding is. So the, I'm looking at A4, the existing floorprint, footprint, excuse me. It contains, as you said, you know, the shed, for example, which is currently nonconforming, or it's within the setback. Is that correct?
It's, yeah, it's currently, it would be quote-unquote "over the line."
Yeah.
So it's, it's nonconforming.
Right. And so what you're proposing is, we get rid of the shed, we get rid of the deck, the portico, and you're putting in a, what is it, a one or a two-car garage?
Two-car attached garage.
A two-car attached garage?
Yep.
That, whose dimensions and location do fully comply with zoning.
Correct.
Okay. Because one of the things, I'm just taking a look here in the bylaw. I know further down in the section 1.4, where it talks about, you know, the building inspector having some leeway in granting building permits in these types of situations, specifically when it pertains to a residential lot, as it does here. I know there's, it mentions that there's a couple of different factors that the building inspector can consider in his determination. So the first one here says that such change does not intensify the structure's existing nonconformities or result in additional ones. I think that's, in fact, the case. It sounds like, based on what you're describing with the dimensions and the location, that you're not intensifying existing nonconformities. In fact, you're decreasing them.
Yes.
Or, at least with respect to these structures, you're actually removing them altogether. I mean, the house will still be technically nonconforming, but there's no changes proposed there.
Correct.
And then it also talks about retains the existing footprint and does not increase the envelope of that structure. And it doesn't appear like there's a problem there.
But is that, does it matter?
Yeah, and that's the thing.
The thing is, you know, the proposed new garage is 24 by 30, whereas the removal of the shed and the porch is 21 by, I would say, like, this one is 21, 20 by 8?
Yep.
And 21 by 4, a bit smaller.
And the other thing I would add, too, for those two points, there's an "or" in there, so it's A or B. It doesn't specify that you need to meet both of those standards, the way I read the bylaw anyways.
And for my understanding of it, the, it's a matter of, is the proposed project not substantially more detriment to the neighborhood than the existing use?
Right.
We, and our contention would be that it is, it is not.
Okay, I have a question for Mr. Chair. Okay, in that 1.4b, the change of nonconforming uses, and down near the second, second paragraph after B, it says there, reconstruction, extension, alteration, or structural change assumed, nonconforming structure may be permitted by the, pursuant to section 1.4d. When you go to that, it says, "The structure shall be allowed and shall not require special permanent variance from the Board of Appeals under 1.4b."
Right.
I guess I don't, I'm not understanding that.
Yeah, so I think, so that's talking about where the building inspector, as I was sort of alluding to before, where the, where the building inspector, because it's a residential, right here, it's a two-family, a single or a two-family residential nonconforming structure, the building inspector can, on his own, decide that even though it's nonconforming, he can allow, or he can grant a building permit without relief from the ZBA if it meets one of these two factors under 1.4d.
Then I guess it doesn't.
It meets, and we were just talking about, we think it does meet the first one, A.
So then he does, so then...
He didn't have to do it, he could have.
Right, exactly.
He could have just issued them...
The building inspector, in his discretion, in theory, the way I'm reading that, he could have.
Okay.
He chose not to. And therefore, he made the determination that, that a special permit was more appropriate here, I think, under 1.4b, hence, that's where we are today. Fair enough?
Yeah, it's, I guess it's a little confusing, but I understand, I do understand what you're saying.
Yep.
I mean, because it's, you know, it's telling you to go to 1.4d, and you go there, it says that, you know, that he doesn't have to, but you're saying that it's his discretion
Yeah.
on whether he wants to, and then it goes, then it says, "Nonconformity of said structure win A or B", and you're saying that it meets A, so technically, he didn't have to.
So I think, the way I'm reading that is, in theory, the building inspector, using his discretion,
Okay.
could have issued, you know, the building permit, but is not required.
Okay, all right.
He can also, you know, send it to this board
Okay.
for further review.
All right, I understand. Okay. Like I said, just a little
Yep.
confusing, but now that you've explained it...
I mean, I think, I mean, that's the way I'm reading it anyways. Anybody else has differing opinion, feel free to...
The only thing, the only thing is, that I would say is, is that, you know, this is what, me personally, me personally, not taking anything away from what's going on, but I think that when we have these, these public hearings for these kind of things, I think that it's, for me anyways, it's important that the building inspector be here, that they can, he can answer, you know, questions to kind of alleviate, you know, some of the things. I mean, you did it eloquently, you know, explaining it, but, you know, I just would have liked to hear him say, you know, why did he, you know, why did he choose to send them to us and not just do it himself? You know, I mean, it's not a big thing, but I'm just saying, I just, that's something I would like to see, and that's something for discussion, you know, sometime down the line.
Fair enough, fair enough. Any other questions from the board? All right, any other comments from the petitioners? Okay, so...
Motion to close the public hearing.
Well, hang on, we want to open up to the public.
Okay.
So at this time, if there are any public comments, I would invite you to raise your hand, and then, as I call on you, you can state your name and your address, and then you'll have an opportunity to speak. With that being said, are there any comments from the public at this time on this particular petition? Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Howard Mariotti. I'm the owner of the property at 18 May Street. I just wanted to see the plans, my only concern, and I probably won't have any objections here, but it is a historic district, and I just wanted that to be kept in mind. The house is bloodmine on the National Register of Historic Places, and it's a little important to me, having been residing off and on at this house for almost 50 years, that the historic, the architectural style of the historic district is maintained and so forth. I would just like to see what the plans look like.
Is there, is there anything that hampers that? Like, if something, like the gentleman said, that this is in a historic, does that, does the historical commission or something, anything have to do with that?
There may be. I'm not aware that that's a zoning issue. There may be another, you know, issue about encumbrances to building in a, you know, at a, a site that's listed on a national list somewhere, but that's, I don't think, I think...
Because I know that if you, if you're on a historical list,
Yeah.
you know, then basically, you can't do anything to the property unless you go...
But this particular building is not an historic building?
It's not?
No.
Do you live net, right next door, is your property right next door to his, to this, to Mrs. Sparks?
It is on the opposite side of Pearson Street.
Okay, all right.
So is that building is an historic building? It's an historic district, that's what you are saying?
It is in a historic district, it's on the National Register of Historic Places.
Your place or...
Your place.
I'm confused.
Mr. Chairman, if I...
You're saying the district is, is historic, or the houses are historic?
The houses are listed by number in the National Register of Historic Places. Now, the district is historic, now, I don't know what the definition is, but it says the historic district includes these houses. They are not like historic sites, per se, so, but those are each defined differently. I am no expert on how those are defined and how that affects this. Like I said, I personally have no objection, I just would like to see what this looks like from an architectural standpoint, given the historic nature of the neighborhood, that's all.
I have no idea how this works, historic means.
Mr. Fitzgerald, do you have an extra copy of the plan that you gave to us?
Any good view, sure.
That that gentleman could kind of look at?
Thank you very much.
If I could just state, Mr. Chairman, for the record?
Yeah.
That I made an inquiry almost immediately after beginning our agreement with Cindy Sparks, with the town offices, if there was any historic issues with this property. And the answer came back resounding, as far as the town of West Boylston was concerned, no.
Who did you speak to?
Yeah, who did you talk to?
Cheryl, in the building inspector's office. And she went through her files, took the time to look it up, and came back and said no, because we would have been in front of the historic commission if that were the case.
What is your position on the remodeling as to the change in architecture?
We've, our architect that designed this building, Peter Grover, suggested an LP Smartside panel. So it's a reverse board and batten, and it has a grain to it. It look, it will, it's in keeping with the nature of the property and the adjacent barn, the way that this garage is designed, and will ultimately look attached to the house. It will be the same color, painted white. So we believe it's in keeping with the aesthetic of the existing house.
The barn is board and batten?
It's really important.
I'm sorry?
The barn, what is...
The barn is not board and batten, no.
Okay, I thought you said it was going to be in keeping with that.
The, the, the structure itself, the new structure, is, it's a, it's a panel that has a reverse board and batten look.
And how does that compare with what, with the barn, or the house for that matter?
It's, it's different, it's not clavering siding, but it's in, it's in keeping with an appearance or an aesthetic of the, of the age of the building.
Does it match either the barn or the house?
No. It will in color. Sure, by all means, yeah.
So this is really important to me, that it keeps with the same type of historic look.
You're welcome.
So previously, I replaced windows that were missing or broken, and I chose to upgrade to windows that had dark exterior frames, just like the house originally had. Originally, they had black frames on the outside, and I actually went to the extra expense to make it continue to look similar to that by replacing with windows that had the dark outside trim and grids. The barn, well, the barn, the new garage, I insisted also have that same look to the exterior of the windows, so that it will still be in keeping with the older look of the home. I am an antique lover.
So, did you want to comment after looking at the plans?
I'm satisfied with that, and I, you know, I trust what they're doing here. They've always maintained it, and I'm satisfied with what I see. I know Harvey's done some very good work in this area. I just wanted to look at the plans, so thank you for that. That's all I have.
You're welcome.
Any other public comments? Motion to close the public hearing.
One other thing. Do we need to worry about, if it is an historic, do we need to worry about the burden, need to worry about it, or no?
Well, so, as alluded to earlier, I mean, I think ultimately, the standard that we're looking at is, is this alteration substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing?
Agree, but we don't have the, I don't think so, no. We had the information, so that this is an historic district, historic building, those information are not there, I'm not aware of that.
I think, he had called, and I think we can just verify with...
Did they have it in person?
Yeah, I think at the desk downstairs.
Sure, and I think we could verify that, and if it's not on the...
Yeah, and Cheryl would have, you know, notified the building inspector if there was any kind of issue. That probably answers my question of what I said, of why he...
That has to go to the historic commission?
Well, I think we could also...
They may not want to keeping the record.
On condition, or... Yeah, I think we could, if we were to approve it, it could be subject to...
Ah, you know, if you want to clarify this, you know, we should, before making any decision, I would clarify it, you know? I don't know, it's up to the board, but if that is the case, you know, we may be making a wrong decision. If it, if it's not, you know, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, so I mean, I guess, there's a couple, again, we haven't even closed the public hearing.
Yeah, we have some discussion, right?
Right, there's a couple of options. One is to consider whether this board is comfortable approving it with maybe a, you know, qualifier or a condition of some sort, you know, referencing...
Even if you put a condition, you know, if it is an, we need to know whether it's, if it is an historic, they shouldn't be building, that's the condition?
Right, which, which brings me to the second option, which would be to continue the public hearing until next time, which allows the petitioner and us to look into it a little bit further before we vote. I mean, I guess, those are the two options, as I see it.
Yeah, I agree, but, you know. Again, it's, it's taking your time and energy for you, but, you know, before we make any decisions, you know, I'm not sure we should consider this, if there is some historic value.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
Cheryl unequivocally stated that this property is not historic as far as the town of West Boylston is concerned.
Additionally, I checked on this when I did my original window replacements for the last several years, because I did it in phases, and was always told by the building department, when we got the building permits for putting those other windows in, that it was not under any historic restrictions.
That alone would trigger historic review, just applying for permit to replace windows if it were historic.
Because anything in, from what I've, from what I've read about...
Is it, is it the building, one second, is it the building, building inspector department, or the historic commission skips the record of, regarding the historic...
She's saying, she's saying that she looked it up, and it's not, and I'm sure that she, you know, relayed that to...
To the building's...
This, I think now, this kind of reiterates why I think that the building, if he was here, he could have said to me, said to us, "Okay, it has nothing, you know, it might be in the historic, but there's no problems," and now would have been, because now I kind of, you know, had the same thoughts. I'm sure that what Cheryl told them is probably true, but I'd rather be safe than sorry, and I agree with Mr. Raj, that maybe what we should do is continue this until, you know, the June hearing, and have the chair, you know, contact the building department, and, you know, find out, and maybe do some more research as far as, you know, maybe contacting the historical commission and seeing, you know, if in fact that is, and if there's, you know, if there are any, any kind of rules and regulations. Like I said, I know, like, once Fenway Park became a historic... Like I said, I know, like, once Fenway Park became a historical mark, they can't tear it down, so it's there forever, which I was hoping that it would never happen.
No, the, the one thing I do not know, know is, you know, who keeps the record of historic buildings? I was under the impression.
Well, the historic commission should know that.
Yeah, historic commission should know, but it may not be.
It's not shared with the building department?
I'm not sure whether they have the record.
I have no idea.
We have no idea on that. So since he brought it up to the historic, building historic value.
And what Raj is saying is true, because I remember when, and just to get off point here a little bit, when ninety-two North Main Street was being debated, there was controversy because some of Oakdale is in the historical commission, but it only goes to a certain point. Their part of Oakdale is probably part of the historical commission, you know. Now whether it's, you know, they can do, Mrs. Sparks said that, you know, she was able to change the windows, you went to the building inspector, got it, see, so that kind of makes me feel like, you know, that he, but I, I understand what you're saying, and I agree with you. You know, we're here to make a decision, and, you know, we're not here to, you know, downplay anybody, but I'd rather be safe than sorry. I'd rather, you know, have us look at it, you know, contact the historical commission, contact the building inspector, make sure for absolutely one hundred percent that she can do what she needs to do, and then have them come back in June, and we can, you know, render a decision. But it's up to the rest of the board. So do you want a motion to close the public hearing?
One more second here. So, a couple of other things that actually I neglected to ask about before we do close the record.
What are you looking at?
So there's, I'm looking in section six point two of the bylaws, there's a few factors that we're obligated to also consider when we're, when we're hearing a special permit request. One question about the proposed garage, now you mentioned that the driveway is, let's see if I can get this right, is on the, comes from Green Street, correct?
Yes.
With this new proposed garage, would the driving onto the property still be off of Green Street?
Yes.
Okay, so that doesn't change. So ingress, ingress and egress, you know, with a vehicle would not change on the lot?
So going to be a change to the width of the driveway or anything like that?
Yes, from the garage to, to Green Street.
Is the cut onto Green Street being widened, or is it, does the driveway widen after?
There is no, there is no curb there, it's flat. The pavement just starts, her property actually extends onto the pavement, in the corner of this property.
So there's no curb, you can just.
There's no curb.
Is there a driveway right now?
For the barn, there is, yes.
How big is the driveway now?
For the barn?
Yeah.
It's maybe ten by ten.
And so what is.
Ten wide, ten deep.
With the new, with the new garage, how, how much wider is the driveway going to be?
It'll be the width of the two-car garage, so twenty-four feet.
Okay. It's currently not paved right there?
It's not.
Is there any paving, like to go to the barn, is there, is there paving?
There is pavement there, yeah, yep.
Does the barn have a separate, separate access? So is there pavement going to the barn, but not pavement to where the garage is?
The proposed garage?
Yes.
Correct, there's no pavement where the proposed garage will be.
But there is pavement, so when, when this is done, there'll be two paved driveways, effectively, one going from the barn to the street, and then one going from the garage to the street, is that how it's going to work?
Yes.
Mrs. Sparks, how long have you lived in this house?
Nine years.
Nine years. When you moved, all three streets existed?
Yes. I didn't know my house was one foot from my property line, it's probably my fault.
That's why, that's why.
I got a survey, but it, but it, it didn't show it.
That's why I was asking, Mr. Fitzhough, on A five, the way that that, that plan, it looks like the front of your house is on Pierce Street because it's so close to the street. It doesn't look like, you know, that May Street is just like a side, you know, like almost like a side street.
That's the side, the Pearson Street is the side of the house.
The front door, you can see on the plant, the plan on the front, you can see it because it's, there's two little porches, and it's, it's the inner porch inside the property, that's facing May Street, that's the only front door.
Mr. Chairman, usually when the front door occupies a street, isn't, wouldn't that be considered the address?
Not what we have here.
No, but she's saying her front door is actually on Pierce?
No.
No, it faces May Street.
I'm sorry, that faces May Street.
So if I understand correctly. I'm looking at this one here, F, A five.
Right.
This would be May Street over here.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So this little porch is that little porch. Okay, because this, to me, this is confusing. I, I, I see what you're saying now. So there's a porch on this side and a porch on that side, porch, porch. But see, that's what I'm saying, because it looks like the front door and the porch is over here, but it's not, it's, it's here, but it's off of this porch, which is basically May Street, correct? Well, I think, I think the, the front door is right there. Is the, is the front door on the first porch or the second porch? If you go to A five, it shows me two porch, two porches, okay? It looks like there's one on Pierce Street, and then there's one on the back of the house. So which one of those is, is the front door?
What you're calling the back of the house, but it's not.
On the barn side.
It's on the barn side, yes.
So that's the front door?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
There's no door on the other porch at all.
Okay, all right. It just that, when you, when I'm looking at this, it looks, it looks really confusing to me. I mean, you're in a unique situation because you occupy three streets, you know, and to me, it looks like the house is more on Pierce, Pearson Street than it is on May Street, but.
I agree, but.
Just one more thing that I wanted to get on the record while we're still in the public hearing. So we did get feedback from the planning board on this proposal. I don't know if, if you received a copy of the letter or not, I won't read the whole letter here, but essentially, the summary from the planning board is, the planning board believes that the proposed addition and paving are consistent with the existing uses and character of the neighborhood, and do not appear to intensify the existing nonconformities or result in additional ones. And we also received feedback from Board of Health confirming that May Street, that this location is on a sewer, so there's no concerns from the Board of Health for this proposal. Did we hear from?
The conservation.
Last page? I don't see any comments, do you want to?
No.
No.
So it says to, to whom this?
To whom this may concern?
I don't think there's.
There's no impact regarding the conservation commission's jurisdiction, and May Street is on sewer, so.
Yeah.
The Board of Health doesn't have any issues.
All right, and this, this proposed garage, does it in any way affect water, is there going to be plumbing in there or anything like that?
Just for washer and dryer.
For washer and dryer, okay.
Or a washing machine.
Yeah. Public, private water facilities, all right, fair enough, I don't think the rest of these factors are.
Is that all of the six two?
Yeah, this is coming from six two. All right.
Okay, motion to close the public.
Any, well, any other comments?
Before then, you know, there are two things we can, you know, so I, I don't think so. How, there are two ways we can go now.
Yes.
One is putting a condition, the other one is wait for the next hearing. So it's up to the board, I guess.
I mean, so.
So just, I just want to be, make sure it's, it's not what they are claiming, it's in the, if it is, when we make a decision in it, maybe we don't want to make a wrong decision, that's all.
I hope it takes a whole month for them to find that information.
Yeah, so, so, so let's think through that while we're in open meeting, so that we don't have to run into problems here. The option, I think, that you're proposing is to vote.
Right.
With a condition that essentially states something about, you know, that this special permit is conditioned on the fact of confirming that there aren't some type of building encumbrance with respect to the.
Historical.
The historical district.
Yes.
And sort of leave it at that, and if that's the case, then the special permit becomes sort of null and void.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Does that, does that work?
That works.
Does that work for the two of you? What are your thoughts on that?
In terms of, I respect, you know, the course that the board will take, we would prefer a vote tonight on the special permit as outlined by Mr. Tigno in his zoning interpretation request form.
Sure.
You know, the reason that we're here. We've done our due diligence, as far as we're concerned, with the historic question in the town of West Boylston. We know Oakdale's a historic district, this property is not listed as far as West Boylston's concerned, but I understand your need to do your due diligence on that, on, on, on your part, so we, I think we'd be okay, Cindy, on the, on the vote with the condition that, hey, if it is historic, if it's approved tonight, it's null and void, but if it's not historic, we can proceed and go ahead and apply for a voting permit.
You know, by continuing it, so you'll be holding for another month, so we just.
I don't think, I think we could find the information out within the week.
Yeah, we'd, we'd rather not wait another month.
Based on our conversation, it's not an historic, based on him, he says it's historic, but our town building inspector department says it's not an historic, so I would, I would be comfortable putting a condition, you know.
I'm comfortable as well.
And that would be able to get us to vote tonight?
Yeah.
If we were to do that.
We'd like that.
Yes.
Any other comments on this side?
No.
Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further comment? Okay, all in favor to close the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye, that's five oh, Toby, thank you for that. All right, so we will, is there any further deliberation, or do we want to come to a vote?
So you want, you need a motion, right?
Yes.
I think, for me, the issue is just the phrasing.
Yeah.
Relative to the, what needs to be done.
Yeah, so let's talk a little bit about that, I mean, what is, has anything come to mind as far as how we might.
Phrase it back in the saddle.
It's always the, where the rubber meets the road, right?
Yeah. So if we approve the special permit, okay, with the following condition, that the petitioner needs to provide documentation to the board showing that the property and the house are not in the historical? Well, I don't, because I, I don't want to get into if they're in the historical district, because that's not the, well, regardless, let's say the house is, that is not a deter, is not the determining factor. The house may be on historical register, I'm not saying it is, but that wouldn't necessarily preclude action, so I don't want to put a restriction on there that unintentionally stymies the, the building just because it, it's on a, some kind of register, and have a condition that can be interpreted as the mere fact that it's on a register precludes the, the construction, because it may be on the register, but there may be no, no one, including, you know, the historic commissioner, whoever might have oversight over this, has any objection to this. But if we put, phrase it in such a way that everybody on the planet has no issue with this, but we've put a condition on that is interpreted that.
Right.
So I want to be careful that saying something like, condition on proof that it's not in a register, well, if that's the case, and it happens to up on a register, but everybody has no problem with it, then we've created a condition that prevents building.
Right.
That would be contrary to what, what we're trying, what, what at least the motion would be. Nobody's voted on this, so I don't know how people would vote, but.
Mm-hmm.
It's all I've done is identify the problem, I haven't given you any solutions.
Can I ask, okay if I ask a question?
It is.
Why would it be the petitioner's burden of proof to determine that her house is not historic? Wouldn't West Boylston have this information on record, on file somewhere?
This is the first time we are hearing about the historical issues. We did not hear the historic, based on the petition, there is nothing says about historical nature. So to him, you know, we are, we don't have the, we did not verify any of those information. The board did not verify the information.
But, but I'm, I guess what I'm asking is, why would it be, why would the burden of proof be on the homeowner? She could come back and say, we looked online, we asked, I asked Cheryl, it's not historic, I mean, I don't, I don't understand that part of it.
Well, I think, before we get into whose burden it is, I don't think we've clearly identified what it is we're looking for. Are we looking for, is we just looking for the, for the building inspector to say, no, it's not historic, are we looking for historic commission?
Mykosi is in a, who keeps the historical information?
No idea.
I was, I was under the impression that historic commission may have some records.
They should.
Not the, thus, building inspector, building department has the record, I have no idea on that.
No idea.
Yes, that's the reason, you know, before making any decisions, we need to verify that information, that's what I said, but, you know, when you, you know, it's, I know that it's delaying, and they have to come back to another hearing, so that's the reason, you know, Nate said, you know, you don't want to put a condition, that's fine with me too, but, you know, they, it seems like, you know, they are not in a, I don't know, so, it's, whatever, really. I think, you know, before making any decisions, you know, we need to clarify that information. So this board have done, in the earlier times, you know, we did, we didn't continue the public hearings until verified by the board. We can always send a letter to the historic commission and ask them, right? Like other, other boards, we did send a letter.
Did we send a letter to the historic commission, Toby?
No.
No?
She did send it to the Concom Planning Board and Water Department.
I don't even know what the historic commission's jurisdiction is, like.
We don't know, we don't know.
Even if it was. Do they have any authority, or are they just purely a?
Before this hearing, you know, we don't know this is an historic district, it's historic building.
But even if, even if it was, do they have a?
Historic buildings, you know, there is a, there is some they can do, some they cannot do it. Even that, that part, you know, I don't know how much they can modify, how much they can work on the building. Historic buildings supposed to believe it as such.
Right. But when there's, when there is an issue of proof, then that is the responsibility of the petitioner to provide the board with that proof. But again, what are we asking to be, what are we, what is it that we think we need to have, have proof on? We haven't even identified the question. You can't ask somebody to prove something without having a question, saying any morphous, it's not historical.
So which, which, if it is an historic building, it, is, this can be altered, that's mine. Historic district is a different story. Historic buildings cannot be altered, right?
I don't know.
Unless they, unless the historic commission approves it.
I don't know that historic commission has that authority, I don't know who has that authority. I don't know if there's such a restriction.
Like Old Stone Church, I don't think so, we can alter it.
If I may?
Go ahead.
Now, we, we applied quite some time ago, there was an ad in the newspaper, if this were in fact a historic property, I would think that someone would be here tonight saying, or somebody would have mentioned it to the board, or the town of West Boylston may have looked into it for the time that they've had this petition in hand to, to make that determination and kind of check this box off. It was because, again, one of the first questions I asked Cheryl down at the window downstairs, is this property historic? Because we planned for that, we would, we would be at a historic commission meeting seeking approval before we get the okay for a special permit, that would be the first order of business.
Yeah.
We wouldn't even have gotten here.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's fair. I think it's also noteworthy that the gentleman who raised this issue to begin with, he seems content with the proposal now as well. You're right, the, the public has had more than two weeks now to, to comment or to come and, and talk about this, and I'm also, I'm still not convinced that even if there is some limitation, restriction on what can be done in, in a historical district anywhere, I don't know, first of all, we don't, we don't know if, if that, if that exists. Second of all, even if it exists, I don't see anything in the bylaws that really sort of speaks to that limitation.
To your point, I mean, rather than placing a, a condition to do something on it, we could do it as approve, you, much like when we say, you know, approve a variance, something, but all other town bylaws, you must be adhered to.
Right.
Approve the special permit to this, but this permit does not extend to, I mean, any restrictions that may arise related to histor, the historic preservation. So that way, we're not overstepping by, and then if the historic preservation committee whatever wants to chime in, then that's on them.
Okay.
This is a, an option.
And, and, and to that point, I mean, the last factor in section 6.2 that we are supposed to be considering, it gets you half the way there, where it says, "All provisions of this bylaw shall be complied with." So with respect to what we've looked at here today, this board could, I think, decide that everything is, you know, ready to be approved, notwithstanding the fact that there may or may not be a historical issue which, which, which we are, we don't speak to
On our, right.
In our decision.
Because rather than us try to run around figuring out who might have an objection to this, since
Right.
as petitioner's pointed out, the town has had ample opportunity to raise any objection, so we can approve, but with the proviso that we are not overruling any historic commission's ability to act.
I agree.
And if the historic commission doesn't choose to step forward, then that's on them.
Okay.
With that in mind, we should probably send them a copy of whatever decision we make.
Sure. Any other comments?
No.
All right, that being the case, is there a motion on the floor?
A motion to, to approve it, but it's that phrasing that I'm
Okay. Motion to approve, um, special permit, um, with res, how about, with respect to
Fourteen May Street?
All provisions of the West Boylston zoning bylaws. I don't know. Trying to think.
Yeah.
development limitations by a local state or federal historical commission or something?
Decision does not extend to independent approvals that may be required due to historic nature of the building or district?
Say, say that again? Yeah. So, the language we have now, "Decision does not extend to independent approval that may be required due to historic nature of the building or district."
Fine with me.
Second then.
That's the motion on the floor?
Second.
We have a second?
Who made the motion?
I did.
Okay.
My second.
Okay.
Any further comment before we vote? Okay.
Do you want to read the motion?
Sure. The motion is to approve the special permit.
It would include the language you had, and then with a second sentence.
Yep. Motion to approve the special permit with respect to all provisions of the West Boylston zoning bylaws, and the decision does not extend to independent approvals that may be required due to the historic nature of the building or district. Okay, all in favor for the approval?
So, that means that if somehow we find out that there is something with the historic commission, then this permit is not?
No, it doesn't mean that.
That means that we're not taking a position on that. We're approving this. If the historic commission wants to step forward and say, "Hey, we need to approve this," then they need to come assert their right, but we're not, that's, that's going to be on them to assert approval process, and the petitioner, who apparently feels that they've done their due diligence, is proceeding.
And what you just said, Mr. Benson, is appropriate. You're exactly right.
Right.
There you go.
Any further comments? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
I'm abstaining.
You're abstaining?
Yep.
Okay. It's four zero, Toby. Mr. Fimi is abstained. So the special permit is granted?
Thank you.
And the written decision will be out within, I think it's fourteen days, I think we have.
Okay.
At that time, that, within fourteen days, will be filed with, at the clerk's office.
Okay.
You'll receive a copy, and then there's, there's a potential appeal period after that.
Twenty days.
You should be aware of as well. Fair enough?
Fair enough.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Thank you.
Let's write this down. Thank you for that. We can fill this out later, I think.
Do you have a watch seat?
Yeah.
It's up there.
You want, you want to start it? All right.
You want to start the next one?
Yes.
Ready?
Let me get the, let me just get my papers in order here. All right, here we are.
All right.
All right, so
Notice.
Yeah, eight oh four, we can start up. But just before we do, can I invite folks representing JH Energy USA to please come to the table? And before we get started, we will just read the, the notice into the record. Feel free, go ahead.
Notice of public hearings, zoning board of appeals, West Boylston, Massachusetts. Zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing at the West Boylston Town Office's 140 Worcester Street, West Boylston, Mass, in the border selectmen meeting room number 210 on Thursday, May 16, 2019, at 7:30 PM, to ask on the petition of JH Energy USA LLC for a variance from the minimum frontage requirement of section 4.2 of the zoning bylaws for the division of land to two lots for the construction of two industrial buildings along the northeasterly portion of Hotwell Street, across from the American Legion Post. This is a repetitive petition, and the board will consider whether there exists a specific or material change upon which this petition is based. Record title stands in the name of JH Energy USA LLC, 1285 Bering Boulevard, Spox, Nevada. Copy of the petitions are unfiled in the office of the town clerk on 40 Worcester Street. All interested parties are invited to attend the hearing. Christopher E. Wilson, Chair.
Thank you.
I do have one question before we start.
Sure.
Did, did we get a, a copy of the new map to show that, you know, what the change? Because I don't see it in the package, unless I missed it.
I don't know. Toby, do you, do you remember getting a
Just what is in the packet. Yeah, just those.
Let me see if I can find it in here. Looks like this here. You got it?
Yeah, there, there should be a copy in the March 15th packet.
This is sheet number one, it says down the bottom there.
Yeah.
Conceptual plan. Okay. So again, like, like we held with the last hearing, we'll, we'll give you a chance to, to describe what it is that the petition is about. We may have questions, and after that, we'll, we'll allow time for, for public comment after that, and then the, the board can deliberate. All right, the floor is yours.
Sure. Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Chair. My name is Jess Orey, I'm an attorney with the law firm Fletcher Tilton, and I'm here on behalf of JH Energy. As you know, we are here as part of the repetitive application process. Procedurally, we submitted the first variance application in January, on January 25th, 2019. That came on for a hearing, and I believe there was a vote in favor of three to two, but that vote needed to be four to one, so obviously the variance was denied. We then submitted a second petition, which was, which, which had changes in the petition, but because, and that, and that was on March 15th, 2019, because the board found that those two petitions were substantially similar, we got a response back on the 18th noting that we had to follow the repetitive application process. We then submitted a repetitive application petition to the planning board on March 22nd. We came before the planning board on March 27th, and the planning board did find that there were specific and material changes, and I believe there was a letter sent to this board on May 12th, listing the findings of that board and recommending, and, and providing this board with the planning board's recommendation. So we are here tonight to look at the second petition for, for a variance, which was submitted on March 15th, and I believe all the board members have that package. And according to both the public notice that went out from the board and applicable law, I believe that the, the procedure here tonight involves a two-step process, right? So, the first step is this board's concurrence with the planning board's finding that there was a specific material change to the petition, and once the board passes that conclusion, then you move on to the actual consideration of the variance and the four prerequisites that are involved. We're happy to go through those now, or if you want to ask questions, we can answer them sort of on an as-needed basis.
Hmm. I mean, so given, you're, you're right, so given that this is a repetitive petition, and, and you mentioned that there is, before we really get to sort of the substantive variance test that, that we need to go through, I mean, for me anyway, it, it would be helpful if, if you could describe what the differences are between the previous petition and this one, so that we can just start to dig into a little bit whether this board can find that there is a specific or material change to open up the possibility for granting a variance
Sure.
as soon after, after the last petition.
Sure, so I'll describe that in brief, and then Patrick McCarty may be able to add some, some color to that as well. So the, the first application requested a variance with respect to lot two, and if I can actually, can I get up and point to it?
Of course.
So this is lot two here, the bigger lot, and the first variance application requested a variance with respect to this lot, so that the frontage requirement of 150 feet would be reduced to 134 feet, correct? The revised petition, which was submitted on March 15th, requested variance with respect to the second lot, and so you can see it right here, this is where the border has shifted, so now this is only 136 feet long, so the variance would reduce the frontage requirement from 150 feet to 136 feet with respect to lot one.
And that's the smaller lot, you were saying?
That is the smaller lot.
So, the original variance was to reduce the frontage of lot two?
Correct. And there are additional reasons for that, but that is, looking at the map, that is the change of the actual boundary, which makes a substantial material change in the actual petition. Petition now concerns lot one, not lot two, first petition obviously concerns lot two.
So essentially, you've shifted the proposed lot line, sort of, as, as I'm looking at the street, kind of up that way?
Correct.
A little bit?
Eastern, yes.
Okay. Is there, in, in that, you know, 15, 20 feet, whatever it is, difference, I mean, is there anything special about that part of the, the lot?
As you see here, the, the proposed stormwater management area falls right here, which is right along the boundary between the two, and the wetlands, which are relevant to the entire development, are all existing in lot two, because of the fact that we're adding additional throw here on lot two, and we're sort of taking into account the proximity of the wetlands with respect to the, the perimeter of lot one, and we are better accounting for or addressing the needs of the wetlands and the ability of the stormwater management area to, to catch any drainage or runoff coming from those wetlands.
Did you receive the letter from, the notice from the conservation commission?
I have not seen a notice from the conservation.
Okay, because they sent us one. Can I just read it?
Sure.
Okay. This came from Mr. Chase, who happens to be the chair of the conservation, says, "To whom this may concern, after revering the materials filed by the applicant, the applicant must file a notice of intent with the conservation commission, as this proposed change will affect the sheet float and roof calculations of what were originally the proposed lots. On the IDA that was submitted to us, we identified the acability of the lots and our jurisdiction therein, and probably the easiest thing to do from this point is, once the applicant has an approved stamp plan, they need to file an NOI with us." So basically, what that's telling me is, is that if the board does approve your variance, you have to go back to the ComCom with a whole new
Yeah, I think there's some confusion, because we actually haven't been to the ComCom for these back lots, but we're fully aware of the requirement to file with both planning board for site plan approval, a stormwater permit, and with conservation for a notice of intent for any work that's within the jurisdictional area. We, we filed multiple applications for the other side of the railroad tracks, for the self-storage facility and for the LFR chassis building, but nothing since I've been involved.
No, that's, that's been filed.
Yeah, so we filed for the front lots on the
Okay.
Do the railroad tracks run through either of these lots?
Yeah. For the record, Patrick McCarty, McCarty, Chair, so Hotwell Street's here, American Legion Post, and this is the railroad tracks here. If this runs, and if this map was zoomed out, this continues all the way behind the baseball field and the LFR chassis.
So, I was, how, who owns the railroad tracks? Is that an easement? What is the
Yeah, so it's, I think we went through this last time. It's kind of a strange situation. This sliver right here is owned by the railroad company, and then this five-foot sliver here, and that five-foot sliver there is owned by the railroad company, and that's owned by Mr. Fuller in the middle, and they have an easement. So they have a section that's feet simple, and then they have a section that's an easement, but they own slivers on either side. It's really strange lot configurations in, in this particular section. You're rubbing your eyes, just as we have done several times, looking at the, the plans for this.
You might, you might want to say, what's on the other side of the
The DCR land.
Yeah, so, I don't even know whether we're getting into the details or not, of, I guess the irregular shape or topography of this is, so we're fixed here by the railroad property. This is owned by the railroad, so there's no means to gain frontage on the westerly side of the property. And then this, here And then this here, and all the way along, this is power line easement, but this is also the boundary between JH Energy and DCR. And they took this property for watershed protection. And they established this lot line here, which of course establishes the frontage. If they had foresight at the time of the taking and had oriented that line here, then we wouldn't be here this evening. But so we're, our regular shape is that we have a really long and rectangular 17-acre parcel of land, and we have two fixed points that we have no control over, the railroad and DCR. And so, you know, we have zero chance of gaining land from either one of them. This is an active spur, and DCR is never going to give you back watershed protection land that they took from the previous owner of this.
I think we're getting into the substance.
Right, and that's why I wasn't sure whether, so that's more of the substance of the argument of the variance going forward. But the difference, the substantive difference between the two applications is, the prior one was, the frontage was non-conforming on lot two, the larger parcel, and now it's on lot one.
But actually, since you brought that up, that you're fixed on those two points, so you have the railroad boundary and the DCR boundary, so the difference between these two then is the exact same boundary line, you're just shifting where you drew the line? Aren't you? Because you're fixed on, I don't know which way is north on that, I can't see from here.
North, this way.
Okay, so you're fixed on the, looks like the northeast boundary line, and you're fixed on the southeast boundary line by the railroad. And so previously, you drew the line so that you were decreasing the frontage on the southerly side, and now you've just moved that boundary line slightly north.
Yeah, that existing, it's actually.
But is that, is that true?
Yeah, we've switched the variance request from lot two to lot one.
Right, but am I mistaken that you've just simply moved the line?
So if I can, if I can jump in real quick, I think that is what happened, but if you look at the first petition, the line is essentially just a straight line. It's a, you know, we're working with right angles, as you would with a lot. The reason that it was changed afterwards was to better consider, you know, what the actual topography of the land was, how do we accompany, how do we account for that and submit a revised petition that is substantially different, such that we can seek an additional petition? So it's not just a moving of the line arbitrarily, it's a moving of the line to actually take into account the properties of the land itself.
Well, you've moved the line, now you're just changing the argument.
Well, we, I mean, there could have been any one of multiple lines moved, that particular location.
Well, it doesn't sound like there were multiple lines that could have been moved, because what your engineer just told me is you're fixed on two points, so you had only one option. You have a line, that line can go south, can go north, or that line can go south. You had the line more south before, now you're moving the line more north. You don't have a third option. That line gets moved north or south, one of those frontages changes, but there is no third option you have.
One of the options that was actually presented to us by the planning board was to form some sort of cutout, to actually change the shape of that border, and, you know, that's something that's sort of beyond the, you know, what we're here to discuss.
To modify the right-of-way of Hartwell Street, to basically put a bulge, you know, like a cul-de-sac-style bulge in the right-of-way of Hartwell Street through a subdivision process to create more frontage, which would be an option. It's, to me, it's certainly a creative option, to say the least.
Right, and I don't think it benefits the town at all to have that.
Not yet. We didn't think it benefited, and we didn't think it would change the outcome of what you end up seeing as a development here.
One more thing about ma'am, Rock Foley, owner. When we purchased the property, they also told us, because we own property on both sides of the railroad tracks, the easement was going to be continuous since it was an easement. When I found out that the easement stopped 150 yards to the, that would be the north side, the south side of the property, it had to change all of the information that were given, because we own all the property on both sides of railroad tracks, it's continuous. And when there's an easement in between continuous-owned properties, they count the easement towards frontage.
And if I can, if I can add just another piece, based on case law, which addresses the specific and material changes in this sort of analysis.
Say that again?
Based on case law that addresses this issue of the specific and material changes with respect to repetitive applications. You know, if it were so material, then it wouldn't obviously have to go through this repetitive application process. So if the change were so great that you can look at it and say, oh, you know, obviously there's a significant material change there, then this process wouldn't be required. A lot of the case law addresses that specific point, and it actually says, you know, there's a particular case that states, "The board may give way to differences which in an absolute sense are relatively minor." So you might look at this, and you might say, "That's a relatively minor change," but it's a change nonetheless. The lot is changed, the lot for which we're seeking the variance changed, and we're trying to do that in a way that makes sense with the topography of the land. That case, just for the record, is Ranney v Board of Appeals of Nantucket.
How do you spell Ranney?
Levin Mass App Court, 112, 1981.
And also, as I understand, the repetitive petition procedure here, as you mentioned before, you were previously at the planning board, and they voted four to one in favor of finding that there was a specific or material change from the last plan to this one.
Correct.
That seems, that's stated in their letter. So we have that. And then, correct me if I'm wrong here, but to my understanding is that, so also, I mean, we're talking about the first part of this hearing, we need to decide this same issue amongst ourselves, and we would need a similar supermajority vote for that?
Okay, that is surprising.
Okay. Other comments? Questions?
I don't see much of a change.
Can you show me on there where the lines were being drawn previously versus where they're being drawn now?
So this is the prior plan, and the line comes down. And so you had 150 and 136. I have to see the back of this. 136. Versus the proposed, changes this angle again, make this 136.
I'm gonna have to get up to see this, because my eyes aren't that good.
Okay.
This dotted line here?
Yep, that's the proposed lot line.
Okay, that's the previous plan?
Yep, and this center line here is its own setback line.
And this is the proposed plan. So the proposed line is?
Yes.
And the remaining lines, sort of between lots one and lots two, and the placement of the buildings, the proposed placement of buildings, none of that's changed? Is that correct?
That's correct. And, you know, really, this is a frontage variance application, and so we really would, I think, by statute, we don't have to really show the lot lines, and there's, you know, not even the setback lines, just the lot lines. We showed this as a preliminary layout. Obviously, we haven't gone through the detailed engineering design, and, you know, the nuts and bolts, stormwater calculations and drainage reports, but this is a probable layout of what the lots would look like.
What's the angle? So you had a line that was essentially a straight line, dividing line. Now, from my view of that, you've created, you've cut off to the right on here, so going north. So if it was a straight at 180 degrees, you've created an angle. What's the angle? Am I questioning clear? Probably not.
No, it's actually more, what's the angle here between the right-of-way and that?
No, so.
So this, if, so if this had gone straight before, right? So now, if this is straight, now you've gone that way. So what's this, what's the angle right here? I don't honestly know that off the top of my head.
So you mean the one where it's sort of, where there's a little bend in the line now? So it's sort of less than 100 maybe, but we don't know how much?
Right.
So we're saying 170 something or other?
Yeah.
For the record, we can't move those lot lines, I mean, all we're trying to do is get the most use of that 17 acres, that's all. If we have to move one of the property lines one way, jog it another, it's just, I mean, the variance application, whether it passes or doesn't pass, it basically tells us what we can do with the property moving forward. So, I mean, if we get approved to have two lots, we can draw more stuff around, maybe. It's just such a large parcel to have only one, one lot allocated to it.
And obviously, granting a variance doesn't approve this plan as a, in our opinion, we would have to have a land survey plan drafted and brought to the planning board along with the variance in order to get that endorsed and recorded.
Yeah.
So really, really, the line, and it's kind of a strange discussion, I guess, in that effect, but really, the line that we're discussing tonight is this line.
Yeah, everything else is kind of irrelevant.
Everything else is subject to change. You know, this line might do something, this building might shrink, this one might get larger.
Particularly for the first part of our conversation, it is a very, very small geographic area that we're concerned with.
In hindsight, being 2020, when the DCR came in and took that property, because we owned, it was just 38 acres back there. So if hindsight being 2020, if we had known that we were going to have this much of an issue, being the owners of the property would have had them move that pin 10 feet.
Did they take that by eminent domain?
Correct, yes. So that's kind of the issue here. If we had known that this was going to be this much of an issue moving forward, we kind of would, I mean, and they basically asked us where we wanted to put that pin, and we just so happened to put it there, because there's a little bit of a hill right there, and they said, "Are you okay with the pin being right here?" And we had to just work with the flow, not knowing that we're going to be 10 feet shy of being able to sell two lots on a 17-acre parcel. Like I said, I was told that because of the easement with the railroad tracks, we're owning property on both sides, that it was a continuous line because it was a shared easement.
Yeah, and again, so I just want to circle back to what it is that we're sort of hyper-focusing on here is, again, you're absolutely right, we're focused on the frontage here, which is the total frontage between the two lots, obviously is not changing, it can't change, it's, you know, it's bolted in there at both ends, so it is what it is. We're trying to figure out whether between the last proposal and this one, does this one provide a specific or material change? And so what does that mean for us? Now, you brought up that Ranney case, right? Which is interesting.
There was also, so just, you know, a couple more considerations. It's not just a shifting of the lines, it's also the lot for which the variance is being sought is changed, right? So it's lot one, lot two versus lot one.
Yeah.
Then you do have the shifting of the line. I think the Ranney case is applicable in the sense that it authorizes the board to consider what would, to make their decision based upon what they may consider a minor change, because that's really all that's required in terms of the repetitive, the repetitive process. There are also no hard and fast criteria that the board is to consider when making this sort of judgment. It really is up to the discretion of the board.
Yeah.
So that's, again, you know, this is, this is something that you all sort of have to look at, and if you're satisfied that there is a change, that the petition is different, then.
Right. And so, I mean, one of the things that comes to mind for me is, I mean, we certainly have, you know, as any ZBA does, we certainly have, you know, a fair number of petitions that come before us. Some get approved, some don't. I don't want to just have, you know, a seemingly, you know, very minor detail changed and then have the floodgates open for everybody to have a second bite at the apple. Do you know what I mean?
Completely.
That's my sort of concern that I'm trying to work through.
Yeah, and building on that, what's to stop, let's hypothetically, if this was, if we said, "It's a change," so we proceeded to consider whether or not the variance should be granted, and hypothetically, at that stage, if the, if the variance wasn't granted, what would be to stop you from coming back next week and just nudging that line a few more feet and say, "We've got another, we've changed it again"?
Well, I think the planning board would be a barrier to entry. So we, you know, even if we wanted.
Well, the planning board didn't have a problem with it this time, so why would the planning board change their mind next time?
I think for the, for the exact reason that you're bringing up. If it were something that continued to occur, then obviously, you know.
But, but the planning board apparently doesn't see this as a problem. So now the planning board would be reversing their own, say, "Gee, we had no problem with this last week, but since the ZBA had a problem with it, an independent board, we, the planning board, now see the error of our way, and we think there's a problem."
I don't think, I don't think they would have to admit any error. I don't, I don't think there is an error.
I'm being facetious in saying admitting the error of their way, but that is effectively what they'd be doing.
No, because once, I think, you make one change, and that change gets kicked up to the ZBA, the ZBA makes the final decision. If you make another similar change, where the justification is again shifting it in another direction, then I don't think, I don't think the same logic applies twice. Right? So if the ZBA is the ultimate authority, and they say, "This doesn't, this is not satisfying to us," then the planning board is, I don't think the planning board would go, you know, go above you guys or sort of overrule your decision and send it back to you again.
For practical reasons, they probably wouldn't, assuming that were to happen. But if you did move it two feet, and I'm just picking two feet out of the air, there's nothing special about two feet. I mean, the planning board is, seems to have come down and said, "Moving that line, we consider it to be a change, so we're good with this." Then kicks it over to the ZBA. If the ZBA was to say, "We're good with it, too," but then the variance isn't granted, comes back, you know, the proverbial next week, and we move the line another two feet, the planning board would then say, "Well, we didn't have a problem with the last two feet, why do we have a problem with the two feet now?" Because both times.
If we fail this time, I'm going to put one building, and we'll be happy.
Well, I'm, this really isn't about your building, this is about the legal argument that you can do, that, what prevents these kinds of things from coming back again and again.
Utilizing 17 acres.
I think that's why there's checks.
Well, that's, that's to the variance, and I appreciate what you're saying, sir, but I mean, this is, this is the more nuanced repetitive process, not, not whether or not the variance should be granted.
But that's why, I mean, that's why there are checks and balances in place, right? If you, you can take any argument, and you can say, "If we were to do this, it creates a slippery slope, and it never ends." But it does end, because there are checks and balances in place, it goes back to the planning board. They're going to say, "You tried this before, ZBA said, 'No, we're not going to let you do it again.'" So I mean, I mean, that's why these processes are in place. I totally see your point, but I think that's why these processes are in place, and that's why it would be, you know, we get the, we get negged pretty quickly next time, if we were to try and do that again.
So do we have to make, do we have to make two votes?
Yes.
Okay.
We do.
Well, no, we'd only make the second vote if we, if the first vote, correct.
So, for them to get what they're asking, there are two votes required.
But only if it gets by the first vote, the second vote occurs.
Correct. Correct.
And under that, I mean, we could keep going back every two years, you know, someone could legally come back with the same exact petition every two years, and get denied every two years, as long as they felt.
There is another parcel in town where that is, happens. Every two years, they come back with the, I can think, the CBA has already dealt with it on a completely unrelated matter in another part of town that is, every two years, they come back.
Yeah, not saying, I'm not suggesting that we wouldn't do that, I'm just saying that that is, so anyone's right under the law, they come back every two years to request the same exact petition, not a, a, a.
Well, in fairness to the other case, I think if they do move the line a little bit each time.
Anyway, you know, judging on the, judging by the planning board's, one of the planning board's suggestions last time we were there, too, you know, we, we could have tried to, you know, make, make some sort of big carve-out, but frankly, I think that would have been kind of a cheap way of getting around the rules, and I don't know. And I don't know that it would benefit any of the interested parties. You know, another thing worth considering is that one of the reasons the repetitive application process is in place is to protect the butters. It's actually specifically in the statute. They don't want to have a butters come, be dragged back in and have to represent their interests every time. I don't think there are butters who are particularly fighting this, this issue, and I don't think they're being dragged back every time. I think there was some individuals last time who wanted, from a VFW, if I'm, if I'm correct, and they wanted to be able to, the, the American Legion. They wanted to be able to continue using some of the land for games during some of their celebrations. We were happy to provide them with, with that authority. So I don't think that particular concern comes into play here either.
Okay. So if there aren't any other comments, does the board want to first vote on this issue before?
Can we, public comment?
Yeah, we, we can, we can ask for public comment.
I think before we get into voting on the first issue, we should get public comment.
Okay.
Because I think for exactly the, I'm sorry, I've forgotten your name.
Jess, oh, we're, not a problem.
Sorry. But exactly the point you made about dragging a butters back again and again, since that's consideration.
Fair enough, all right. So with that, if there are any other comments from the board at this time, we'll open it up for public comment. Anybody who does have a comment, I would ask you to raise your hand and state your name and your address clearly for the record. Are there, so with that, are there any comments from the public? Yes, sir, please state your name and your address.
Kurt Devillers, D E V I L L E R S, 211 Hopwell Street. I am a butter and I do have a problem with this project. And we've been here, we've been dragged into this a lot. Not being said, Mr. Fuller's statement, this project is moving forward regardless of what happens here today. It's going to be two lots or one lot. They may come back with a cul-de-sac and do some of that nonsense. But at the January meeting, there were some bigger issues raised other than the variance that go along with this project, the bridge being that major issue. And it was suggested by the board that Mr. McCarty meet with the Mass D O T Bridge Division to find out what the status of that bridge is, what the capacity is, and how they're going to address the issue of getting construction equipment across that bridge. That bridge is the only access to my property. Not only that, my utilities, my water and my sewer run across that bridge. Anything happens to that bridge, I lose those utilities and I lose access to my property. So that's a pretty big concern of mine. When you start talking about construction equipment, you're talking 30 and 40 tons for a cement truck, an excavator, a bulldozer. There's going to have to be steel trucks coming in and so on and so forth. I don't know if it's fair for me to ask now if they've met with them, but that, that needs to be taken into consideration with this entire project moving forward. That bridge is going to have to be addressed. Right now, it's, it's probably at 30% capacity. I don't even know what the capacity is. Mr. McCarty at the January meeting said it was 50 tons. If it was 50 tons when it was put in there and it's, it's depleted by 50%, it's only 25 tons right now. The equipment that they have working at the, the chassis building at the end of the street, if they were to just bring that equipment across, it's going to exceed the capacity of that bridge. So I, I'd like to ask how they're going to address that issue.
So I met with the DEP, I may. So it's funny, because the town didn't have any record of the bridge. The railroad company actually constructed the bridge because the bridge there prior was not safe and they didn't let driving the trains under it. So by the state of Massachusetts, a bridge has to have 100 ton, 100 ton capacity. If it's two lanes, that's a single lane bridge. It's noted at 55 tons. We did get the paperwork on it. Second law, secondly, I mean, even if we don't get a variance, I'm still going to put a building over there. So it doesn't matter if a truck goes over there twice or four times, it's still the same weight of the truck. The previous gentleman that we were talking to that was going to buy it owned a construction company and all he does is do heavy equipment, so he also paid phone calls on the bridge and, and got that verified. So it's, it's really not a bridge issue. It's more of a, how many buildings are we doing, one or two, or how many lots, to be honest with you. Because, I mean, even, you could sell that as one lot and they could still put two buildings up as long as they follow, you know, the laws and regulations as far as the purpose and all that other stuff.
And is that bridge the responsibility of the DOT?
The bridge is now the responsibility of the DOT. So the bridge was placed in 1999, I believe they said. I have the records on it, but like I said, they were waiting for the town to do it. The town didn't do it, so the railroad company actually did it, which is why it fell off of the town map, if you will, because they had no record of actually installing the bridge. So it's kind of a odd story, but that's, it's a 50 ton capacity bridge.
I'm just curious, what happens if the bridge is collapsed? Who, who's responsible? Is it the town or the Mass D O T?
I think your teacher wrote in 2008 is what they said. By law, they had to because it was.
Who's the responsibility by the town?
The Department of Transportation, Massachusetts.
Mass D O T?
Yeah, there's a posted sign.
Uh huh. I know that this is a Mass D O T because.
If there's a posted sign and, you know, it has the picture of the different truck types, you know, let's say five ton if it has two axles, or let's say 15 ton if it has three axles. If you as the CDL driver ignore that and drive over a bridge and cause, cause damage, then you're responsible for that.
So then when, when they constructed the bridge, they had all of the rules and regulations to deal with your.
So if the bridge damages, you will be building a bridge?
No, if the bridge is posted, any bridge anywhere, if it's.
Is that bridge is posted?
I don't think that bridge is posted, is it?
Is that bridge is posted, my other person?
I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm just saying in general, if a bridge is posted and you exceed that capacity.
I agree, yeah.
Then you're responsible. Same as the, the problems that you see on the news, if you drive the box truck into the low bridges.
I don't think that.
I don't think that there is any posting on that bridge.
It, it.
Is it? I don't know, I haven't checked it.
I haven't really seen a sign over there, but I'm sure that the, the bridge in its design has a specific weight rating, so.
But if it doesn't have a sign, then it.
Well, I know we raised, there was a bunch of questions raised after we went and did all the due diligence that the gentleman in Miami said, there were people, they didn't even have it on record at the town that there was even a bridge there. They had it as a, as a wooden bridge.
I mean, that bridge is not the.
I know.
It's, yeah, especially for two-way traffic is, is tough. So.
So do you think the construction equipments will be handled by the bridge?
Absolutely. And it wouldn't be allowed to install a bridge if it wasn't rated for 50 tons.
Well, quite frankly, when it was installed in 99, it was rated for 50 tons. Now, you have the bridge report, it shows deterioration down to only 30% capacity on some of those beams. The rust is that bad. That's my concern. It's, the DOT can have the records from 99 or the railroad or whoever saying it was, it's 50 tons, right? That doesn't mean it's 50 tons today. That, that's the concern.
Trying to say the DOT doesn't keep up?
The report shows that, right?
When you talk to DOT about this bridge, not to get too far, how often do they inspect this bridge?
This bridge was, the inspection date is on that report.
2017?
Yeah.
Now, is that done every couple of years or?
I don't know, that, yeah.
When you had the conversation with them, did they say anything about when their next inspection?
That was probably Christopher that had the conversation with them, so I, I really don't know. I know that it's on their list of high priority issues in Massachusetts. It's in the top 10 of the worst bridges.
Yep, so the, the issue is certainly noted.
Yeah, and I, you know, we said back at the first meeting, and I'll repeat it again tonight, that we're not into the nuts and bolts engineering of this site at all.
The bridge is.
Yeah. Well, we'll certainly look at it. I mean, for my own.
But that's really, that's not the issue, that's.
Escavator across it without.
The 25 meter target is not the bridge.
Yeah.
So with that said, are there any other comments?
The only other comment I have is, at the December meeting, we talked about 500 to 1,000 yards of dirt that's piled up on the property line. And Mr. McCarty said, "As soon as the thaw came in the spring, that dirt was moving. Do we have a timeline for that to move?" I mean, the process of selling the house and it is affecting the property value of my house.
Yeah, we can get it moved next week if it finally stops raining.
Yeah, really, yeah.
That's our comment that you see on, on Shrewsbury Street. We can get that moved as early as next week. I appreciate it, thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Okay.
Oh, hold on.
There is. Comment? You have anything? I guess not. All right, so, all right, so back, let's get back.
You're going to leave the hearing open?
Well, so here we are. So here's the first issue that we need to address, specific or material change, whether this board votes and thinks that there is or there isn't. They've mentioned the existence of the case law there. It seems to suggest that, you know, not a quote unquote "major" change may be needed to, to meet that standard. You know, obviously then at the same time, we don't want to sort of set the standard, you know, to, to start having other petitioners feel like that they can, can keep coming back sort of in a serial manner. So I mean, those are the two issues that I see when I'm thinking about this issue.
I agree.
So, so let me ask you this. Would the board prefer to vote on this issue first before we hear fully anything else about the actual merit of, of the variance?
I think, I think that, I think that's proper procedure.
Okay.
I think it should be a bifurcated procedure.
And just to, just to, just to note one last thing, you know, the statute does allow people to come back and file for repetitive procedures. So this, you know, the fact that we want to discourage that, even if you were to deny it, you know, it's, it's, everyone has the ability to come do it. So if everyone were doing it, you know, everyone, obviously, the, the sort of wheels of bureaucracy would be tied up with that. So everyone has that right to do it, and we're here, you know, exercising that right. And obviously, you know, Rob has said he's not coming back again. This is, this is one last attempt to sort of get the variance that he's seeking to get. And, you know, it's up to the, up to, up to the board's discretion. If this were ever to be reviewed by another court, the, the standard of review would be clearly erroneous, which is an incredibly high bar. So this really is the discretion of the board members here tonight with respect to this issue.
This one again, you would need a super majority?
We do, well, this board, for us to proceed to the substantive issue of the variance, a super majority is required. Four votes would be required from this board tonight. Any other comments before we entertain a, a motion?
No.
So the only comments I have is, you know, I don't know how do we look at it, you know? The simple thing is, you know, one lot to another lot, that's all that changes. And in this same board, you know, we have given the variance for us, you know, this is only a six feet, right?
Six, you mean 16?
The front edge, 16.
Or 14, whatever, whatever it is. I think it's 136. All right.
Once again, back in February, you know, we talked about variances and what needs to be looked at is three conditions.
Again, I, I just call a timeout on that. We're not at the variance stage right here. We are only considering whether the repetitive motion stage. It, that, we'd have to, we haven't proceeded, we'd have to approve that before we can get to the variance. So we need to keep these, these concepts separate.
Okay, so then I'll make this comment. I was at the planning board meeting and I didn't agree with their decision and I still don't agree with their decision. So my vote would be no.
Okay.
There's no specific or material change, as far as I'm concerned.
Any other comments before we take a vote? Okay, is there a motion then? A motion to, I guess, a motion to find a specific and material change with this proposal is, is there a motion?
Some.
So a yay vote is that there is a specific and material change?
Correct.
Now, is the phrasing specific and material?
Yes.
Right here.
According to what I, according to what I found on a document that came from the state, I think the phrase that it says here is "specific and material changes" in the conditions.
And that's exactly what.
Is that your understanding as well?
That is, that is correct, but just, you know, keep in mind that the colloquial definition of a specific material doesn't necessarily govern what the case law has established with respect to the statutory language. You know, the, the, the language that I mentioned before, the board may give weight to differences, which in the absolute sense are relatively minor. I think should be, you know, in your minds as you're making this decision. And, and despite the fact that it's to change a line, again, it's, it's a different lot. And the fact that there's two lots involved, I think, is a unique situation that also sort of mitigates the concern that everyone, you know, this is going to create a slippery slope, right? Because generally speaking, when people are seeking a variance, you're speaking with one lot. You don't really have the ability to, to move lot lines around between lots. So this is a pretty unique situation where, you know, I think, I think the board's discretion would be well exercised to, to get us past this first hurdle and then consider the variance.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. It's, it's in the affirmative, a motion to find a specific and material change in the conditions.
Yes.
From the, from the previous petition to this one.
Yeah, I'm, I'm on the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Well, I'll second it just to get it to a vote. I can hold up the procedure.
Okay. So we have a second. Any last comments before we vote? None, okay. All in favor of finding that there is a specific and material change? Aye? Those not finding a specific and material change, opposed?
No.
Aye, so.
So that's four no?
Yes.
To be correct, okay. And one yes?
Who was the yes?
I was.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
And you need another vote sheet?
Yes. So do we need to close the public hearing now, I suppose?
Yeah, I guess.
I guess we do.
Then include me.
Motion to close public hearing?
Second. Is a vote, a motion to vote to close the public hearing?
Now, who made that motion?
I did.
Okay.
I seconded it.
Seconded by John. All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Raj, did you vote to close the public hearing? Yes or no to close the public hearing?
On that issue.
On that issue.
Close the public hearing? Oh, yes.
Okay. 5-0, we've closed the public hearing. All right. How'd that make it here? What's that?
No, I'm confused, I didn't even came back.
Oh. All right, where's my agenda?
I'll be off town.
I'm sure I've got it here somewhere. Too much paperwork. Thank you. All right. Next is, yes, Saaja Gardens. So we have, well, so two things. First off is, it's the members of the board who were here during our, I think it was our, was it our February? No, it was before February, it was last year. Folks will remember that.
Another one?
Folks will remember that last year, the, the owner of Saaja Gardens came before this board for an amended comprehensive permit, specifically dealing with how many one bedrooms and how many two bedrooms apartments there are.
One bedroom with dens.
And, and, right, and one bedroom with dens, thank you for that. And ultimately, this board did find that the proposed changes were not substantial. So there was an amendment to the comprehensive permit that was made at that time. And then that, that amended comprehensive permit was subsequently recorded with the town clerk's office. That comprehensive permit inadvertently included a previous incorrect version of one of the conditions for, for that amended permit that was approved by the board. So that amendment was updated and sort of fixed on the record and resubmitted with the town, with the, with the town clerk. I just wanted to, to bring that issue to the board's attention. issue to the board's attention so that the board is aware. John, I know you weren't on the board at the time. Were you on the board when we made that?
I believe I was.
Decision? I think that you were. So what I just wanted to do, just to be absolutely clear, to get on the record, that we now have the correct version of the comprehensive permit filed with the town clerk and that we filed the necessary paperwork sort of detailing. It's actually in our information here.
Okay.
Sort of detailing what that change was.
What, the change?
Yes, it was condition eight A specifically.
Eight A?
Do you have that in front of you?
Comprehensive permit has changed so many times.
Yes. So what I would like to do tonight, just to make sure that there's no uncertainty here, is to, first of all, acknowledge that that's what's been done and make sure that everybody is aware of that.
Okay.
It was, so condition eight A, you'll remember when we were going through.
No, I understand, you know, but what I'm reading here is that, if I'm reading this correctly, it seems as though, is that as a current lease expires, then
Yes.
There'll be another, so in other words, if a one bedroom with a den that is affordable and that expires, that now becomes an affor, a market?
I think it, I think it depends on how many, how many there are at that point in time.
You can't reduce the number of, well.
We gained one.
Yeah, we added an affordable.
Oh, okay. So, because you can't drop below the
Right.
Okay.
That was part of the
Okay, so it says that all nine of the one bedroom plus a den units in building C are occupied by tenants. Of those units, the first two to reach the end of their current lease shall be designated as affordable and the permit holder may not renew or expend their current leases under the market rate terms.
Yep. Right. So what I'm trying to get at here, Dave, see that packet that you're reading?
Yeah.
If you look at the front page, is that a letter? Is that like a memo?
Yes.
All right. So that's what was newly filed with the town clerk's office. And it details the change in language.
Okay, well.
Okay?
I don't know, maybe it's just me, but I don't ever remember that.
Well, I mean, that's what the board voted on back at the time.
I mean, I remember we voted that there was, you know, that there was nine, you know, one bedrooms with a den.
Yep.
Seven of them were market.
Yes.
And two were affordable.
Yes.
But I don't ever remember any of this other information.
Yep. That was in there.
Who checks to make sure that when the board votes on these things, that what is ultimately submitted by the permit holder matches what the board approved? How do we know that the petitioner doesn't just say, oh, thanks for voting on that, and then slide in language that, I mean, is somebody checking to make sure that the petitioner is being honest?
It's a good question.
It's a great question. Well, that's how this all came up because originally it was fourteen one bedroom.
I'm not saying that didn't happen, I'm just saying, but
I'm just trying to explain.
I understand.
And now, all of a sudden, he said that, you know, and he wanted to make them two bedrooms and we said absolutely not.
Well, throughout the course of this, I was on the board, I was off the board, I'm back on the board, the comprehensive permit has changed many times. And it has come up many times that people weren't in agreement that what was being filed was necessarily what their understanding of, had been approved by the board. So I was just wondering, who's minding this?
Nobody checked it.
Who's minding the store? Is this something that the, that is, town council is keeping track of?
No, nobody is keeping track. The management company is supposed to keep track of that.
There is one thing, is, you know, he has to, all the comprehensive permit, all the approvals, he should be filing it at the registry of deeds.
Well, I'm not saying that they're not being filed. I'm just saying, not specific to this petitioner, but anytime somebody's got a comprehensive permit and they make a change to that comprehensive permit, who is doing a line by line, making sure that what shows up in the next comprehensive permit? I mean, this is section eight A. Did anybody check to make sure section seven A didn't change? I mean, there's, just a question, you know.
No, nobody checked.
Some unscrupulous person, and not this petitioner, but just any particular unscrupulous petitioner, or just maybe by mistake, there's been so many copies.
Would you be willing to?
I wasn't volunteering for anything. I was just asking a question.
Okay. Do we have a copy of what we actually approved?
Yes.
Okay. Well, before I take a vote on this, I want, I think
There's no vote. It's just a
Well, I'm not going to sign until I see what, to see what we
Can be tabletted for next meeting?
There's nothing to discuss. He's just notifying us.
Oh, just courtesy.
I've been duly notified and caused trouble by asking questions.
So let's move on then.
Move on.
Moving on again.
So we don't have to sign that?
No.
So we don't even know?
We already signed it. No, we already signed it. We signed it years ago.
We have one.
You have properly notified the board.
Thank you. Thank you.
We have one.
I have just one anecdotal, anecdote on that, which said, we have had noticed trouble where even when things get registered at the registry of deeds, like you'll have deeds missing pages, you know, this sort of thing is not checked routinely.
That's sad.
Yeah, we need to think about that then. All right, so moving on, because I don't want to stall here.
Yeah.
It's getting later. Second issue, same, same property we're talking about here. Within just the last week, we did finally, or I should say, we did receive the cost certification for this project. Speaking for myself, I took a look at the document and the attachments and the exhibits and all that. I'm not a CPA. I can't really make sense of that, whether it's
I agree.
Everything's great, whether everything's not. So I would sort of put forth at this time, now, we have thirty days from when we received this, to provide any comments or suggestions back to MHP on the cost certification that was provided to us by MHP.
But we can ask for an extension.
We can ask for extension. I don't know that they're readily granted.
For Alfred Terrace.
First off, we have to ask for an extension.
Well, again, I don't know, I'm not here saying that we can rely on that. I think it's within the MH, you know, mass housing.
You could always contact Amanda Rowe and ask her.
So what I'm looking to do here is, we still have, I don't know, three, three-plus weeks of those thirty days. What I would suggest is that we, as a board, agree and sort of vote to have either someone in affordable housing or the town administrator fund a CPA that we can hire to go through and look through this in detail and then provide the board with some feedback, similar like we would do with VHB.
So in the meantime, you'll be asking for an extension?
If we need it.
Yeah. I have a question.
Probably will.
Yes.
Getting the hiring and
Did Paula get a copy of this?
I would send in an extension.
Has she looked at it?
Standby. Because by an extension, in the meantime, we could do this.
Yeah.
She's not a CPA, but yes, I think she's
Okay. The one thing that I know for a fact is that when a developer on a forty B project goes to do the cost certification, there is a list that the state has of authorized CPAs that do the cost certification for the subsidizing agency, okay? These folks are contracted by the state, okay? Now, the way I see it is that if that's the case, you don't want to be messing around with these figures, okay? If the figures are wrong, which we don't know if they are or not, it's because of the material that the developer gave to the CPA, okay? The CPA is not going to write this up with false information because they're going to lose, you know, their fund, their trust with the state. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay? And I agree. You know, is this something, I don't know, does town, does KP Law have someone that does this kind of stuff?
Yeah, but this is a CPA matter, not a liar matter.
Yeah. No, but they might have somebody that does, that looks at financials.
As advice, Affordable Housing Trust has authorized, if you ask Pat, the chair, we've said, you know, you can, as a board, we voted to say you can do that.
Right.
And offering the assistance of the council that we have. And I don't know about the funding, but I also think the funding can be pushed back to the applicant. Like, they're supposed to, like a review engineer kind of fund. They can, if you, if we went to a CPA, they could pay that bill.
I think at a minimum, it makes sense to reach out to Affordable Housing and say, give us some input on this.
Yeah, which I've actually, I've done, so I talked to Pat.
Yeah, we just talked at a meeting.
Yep.
And Pat can, we've let her do whatever with our consultant.
Yes.
Given her reigning to assign the consultant.
And I had a conversation with Affordable Housing's contact attorney.
Dan Hill.
No, he didn't have time. It was somebody else. I spoke to him and this was the recommended path.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I lack the expertise to make any kind of informed judgment to object to it. So rely on the greater knowledge that is perhaps present in Affordable Housing to flag issues. And if an issue's flagged, then perhaps this board can dig into what the issue is that's flagged.
Right.
But I don't have the requisite knowledge to go through and flag issues that I think are concerning.
Right.
Assuming there are any.
Because the most important thing is, is that the developer can't make more than twenty percent.
Oh, yeah, this is, this could be a valid, there could be a lot of money coming to the town if it's
Yeah, because if he goes over twenty, if he goes over twenty percent.
I think that's for ownership ones. These are rental though.
I don't know the difference in ownership and rental, but that's
I think it's still, but the point is still valid. There's a cap and we want to make sure that these numbers are right.
Yeah. I agree. And I, yeah, it's so important to get the numbers right. We, somebody with more knowledge at least needs to weigh in and potentially point us in a direction.
I can tell when this does a good job. Last one for
Alfred Terrace.
Paris.
And I did, again, I'll mention this to the board as well. So I mentioned, I talked to the town administrator as well. I asked, I asked him between the two of them, were there sufficient funds in the event that we do have to pay for it, that we can't push that back to the applicant? Do we have sufficient funds for such a review? The answer was yes. We do.
So you ask, I agree with you.
Yeah.
Is there, is there a vote to be had here? Or is this more of a, your powers as the chair and we are, we're behind you?
Why don't we, yeah, why don't we vote and say, yes, this is sort of the path?
Empower the chair to make these
Yeah, to go out and, you know, to your point, Dave, look at the list of CPAs who work in this
And MHP should be able to provide that list to you.
And I'd like to find one that works on the municipal side as opposed to the developer side.
The consultant might ask for suggestions.
Yep, yep, absolutely. And then from there, as I get a better sense of timing, if we're getting, say, toward the end of the month and it's getting close, then I can, you know, potentially reach out to MHP, ask for the extension.
I'd just ask for the extension to begin with.
I move that the board vote to authorize the chair to make any and all inquiries necessary to provide the board
Second.
Expertise on the cost certification.
Second.
Second. Any further comment?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed? Okay. Five, nothing. Thank you for that.
There's only, there's one other thing about, since we're talking about ninety-two Main Street, okay. We still have not received an ASBILT for the project, okay? Now, there is money in the account.
Right.
Okay? That is his money. I would like to have the chair send a letter or an email to both Mr. Ali and to his attorney, Mr. Haverty, requesting the ASBILT to find out where it is and to have it so that we can, once we receive it, we can send it to VHB so that they can go out and inspect and make sure, you know, what's there is there. And that they would make a report to us. And once there's a report and the board is satisfied with that report and VHB has submitted a bill for that inspection, then I think, then at that time, the board should be able to look at possibly sending, have the chair send a letter to the town accountant to go ahead and release the funds.
So normally, I'm just thinking back on my experience with the planning board. Normally, when the planning board, for example, in a subdivision, holds a certain amount of money in escrow for a project, for somebody who's building a street, inspections goes with that. But usually, they're fairly eager to finish the job so they can get that money back, right? They come to the board at the end and say, let's finish your review, but then can you release those funds back to us? Because you're hanging on to thousands of dollars.
But you're talking about apples and oranges.
Usually it's
Because this is a forty B project, this is in a whole different ballgame. I'm going to enough training.
There's one more thing. Usually they're going for the ASBILTS and then the certificate of occupancy for banking reasons or anything like that. Because we usually don't have, unless there's a bond on the road or something like that.
Right, that's what I'm thinking of.
The bonds are significant, but usually the amount of money in the, you know, inspection fund or something like that is not that, you know, it's a thousand or something, a whole thousand dollars.
We're holding more than that.
If it's a big bond, yeah, they'll come to you. But then, is it going to be a bond released completely or a bond released like an increment?
Do we have a bond?
We don't have a bond. No bonds on forty B projects.
Well, okay, I don't know what the money is tied to, but whatever it's tied
It's tied, it's tied to the inspections, VHB's inspections or any other inspections that need to be done.
So it's like an expendable fund whenever they come?
Right. So every time VHB sends a bill to Toby, right, she sends, she writes it up and sends it to the town accountant. The town accountant pays it out of that particular fund. That's what it's set up specifically. Nothing else can be done with that fund. We can't use it for anything else but for that purpose.
Okay. I'm not that familiar to give you that advice. But I would say, we've had some recent confusion on ASBILTS, asking for the ASBILT drawing. It's really, you want the site plan ASBILT and engineered approval that says that the ASBILT condition conforms to the original required plan.
That's a stamped document.
That's a stamped, well, there's a stamped drawing that says, this is the ASBILT, this is in fact what's there, and that's stamped by the guy. And a letter that says, and this drawing of the ASBILT situation conforms with the approved plan, or these are the differences, and then we can talk about approving them.
The last part would seem relevant, having an ASBILT with no reference point is
I mean, there could be, okay, here's the ASBILT that has nothing to do with the original plan, but here you go, let's go.
But VHB would be able to tell us if everything that they need, that's required, is there.
Yeah.
Well, that's true, except that now you're going to spend all of the funds that you have for VHB to do that review when really their engineer should at least give it a first whack at that, you know.
No, no, I understand that. But what I'm saying though is, they'll tell us if all the information that's required is there. If it's not, then we can go back to the developer and say, look, this is what we need.
Okay. That's a significant review for VHB.
Do you ask the developer first?
Huh?
I would get it from the developer first and have a review.
No, I understand. What I'm saying though is, you tell him exactly what you're looking for. He's been in business long enough, he should know exactly what needs to be done. He's done a lot of work in this town. So he knows what's required. Once he sends us all that information, all we have to do is send it to VHB and ask VHB, is this everything that you need? Before you go out to do your inspection, is this everything that you need? They're going to come back and they're going to tell the chair, yes or no. If it's no, then they'll tell us exactly what else we need. The chair will then send it back out to the developer and say, okay, this is what else we need, before we even say. That way, there's no having this, having VHB going out there
But I also put on there that it's their consultant or engineer's requirement or responsibility to say, this desert does not conform to the plan. Because if it's up to us to decide, or whoever to decide that it conforms to the plan, then any
But that's that little, that's that little block that's got to be on the ASBILT, right?
No, I mean, it could be a separate letter by their engineer. They might have several items that don't conform because of some reason.
So their engineers should be preparing an ASBILT, certifying that they're, the ASBILT
Meets the plan.
Meets the plan. And if it doesn't meet the plan, by exception explains where it doesn't meet the plan.
Those get to be approved by you or not.
And then if we needed VHB to review And then if we needed VHB to review that, they would be reviewing the work already done by, by the petitioning.
Exactly.
And that'll be a lot more efficient because-
Absolutely.
VHB doesn't have to figure this all out from the guy.
Right.
So is that, is that the board's recommendation? Did I reach out to the developer and ask for those?
And, and his attorney. And Mr. Haverty. From Gombrowski, Haverty and somebody else.
Haverty. ASBILT. Okay.
And I'll see him in two weeks.
Fair enough. See the financial report?
We don't have a financial report.
Mail paperwork.
Chris, has it, there's like a small pile there.
Yeah.
Just a small.
Just a small one. So you want to make a work is yours now? So can I leave? And not visit here?
Well, we're waiting for you to leave for the good stuff.
Yeah, exactly. But here it is right here, in escrow.
What is it, about eighty-two hundred dollars?
Yeah. All right. So we can buy those. I think that's it. Um, is there anything else?
Just to remind people that Monday is town meeting.
Yeah.
At the high school, seven o'clock. There's twenty-seven articles on the warrant. Please be there on time. We need at least a hundred people to have a quorum. Soon as we get there and get started, as soon as we can get out.
What happens if there isn't a quorum?
Then they can't, then they can't, they'll just wait, they'll wait for a while, like we did last year, last May.
Oh, if there is no quorum?
We had to wait a half, um, over half an hour before we actually got a quorum.
If there is no quorum, we can cancel the meeting.
All right, and the next scheduled ZBA meeting is Thursday, June twentieth?
Uh, Chris?[1680.02]